Good afternoon, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the December 8th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the White House of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, I believe we have a quorum with five people. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presumed.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the November 10th, 2020 meeting minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do want to put a change in on that. It had to do with PB 1823, actually on page six of the packet. When you get down to the results, you know, that are shaded in the block, the eyes for that, and it was a tie vote, the eyes were shaded.
Gotcha.
So Shay Ballance and K. Brian Bass, me, I was actually a nay with David Doll and then Juanita was the other eye.
The sentence right above the shaded box-
It's correct.
Has it correct, but the shaded box, it's wrong.
Is wrong. Yeah, that's the only note, change I would note.
All right. Y'all, y'all got that? Okay. All right, with that change in place, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion, second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes from the November 10th, 2020 meeting are approved. Are there any items of old business? Believe we have any, so new business, we have PB 20-21, Nigel and Sarah Culpepper rezoning, request to rezone 7.5 acres of property located at 6804 Carrottoke Highway from light industrial to general business. The property is tax map 108, parcel 52D, Papa Branch Township. And Jenny Turner, how are you?
Doing well, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants, Nigel and Sarah Culpepper, are requesting a conventional rezoning of property located at 6804 Carrottoke Highway in Grandy from light industrial to general business zoning. This request is a downzoning. The parcel is seven and a half acres and it's currently undeveloped. You can see the parcel here to the bottom of the screen, south of Red Dog Lane. This aerial also shows to the north Hickory Hill, Subdivision, Uncle Graham Road. You can see Waterfront Drive where Waterside Villages are. Across the street, you can see the convenience center for Grandy. And then here's an aerial that kind of gives you a view of properties to the south of the subject property, including Guerinton Road and just south of Guerinton Road on the east side of Carrottoke Highway is Cotton Gin Property. So that's where the parcel is for reference. The parcel is currently zoned LI, light industrial. It's surrounded by property to the north where you see Red Dog Lane and GB, that's vacant property to the north and wooded area. The property just to the south between this property and Grange Drive is Weeping Radish Brewery, Restaurant and Brewery at Butchery. That zoning is currently LI. To the east, again, you can see the, you can't really see it, but the convenience center is across from Grange Road, zone GB, and then property around that is zoned ag and is used as farmland and it's wooded area. And the property to the west appears to be vacant agricultural, but as we saw in our work session, we picked up on the fact that there's wastewater treatment area for the brewery in that area to the east of this parcel in the LI zoning district. So in 2000, the year 2000, the property was rezoned from general business to light manufacturing, and it was part of a request that included 78.9 acres, and you can see that LI zoning there on the map. And then that zoning district was translated from light manufacturing to light industrial that it is now with the adoption of the UDO and zoning map in 2013. The parcel is designated as full service within the Grandy subarea. For this request, the applicant did hold a community meeting on October 20th. Only the applicants and their family and county staff were in attendance, but they did provide correspondence from neighboring owners that you can find in your agenda packet on pages 23 and 25. Uli Benowitz of Weeping Radish basically was just giving notice to the owners that he is running a business adjacent to their property. There are going to be existing and future impacts, for example, hoods from the restaurant kitchen odor, forklift operation, the wastewater spray field, and Uli also stated that he does have plans for future development on his property's own LI. And then there was also a letter from William Bradley, the owner of the farm across the highway, who stated that he had no objection to the proposed rezoning. So this is a closer up view of the property, and it's maybe hard to tell, but you can see along the north property boundary as well as the southern boundary, there's existing hedgerows, and the hedgerow on that southern property boundary helps to buffer this property from that existing LI zoning property and brewery/restaurant operation. You can also see here that most of that LI light industrial zone acreage is accessed by Grange Drive, and this subject property does not have access from Grange Road. And so this rezoning will help to consolidate access to LI zone property through that existing Grange Road access. The conditional zoning, or it's not a conditional zoning, the zoning request is consistent with the 2006 land use plan because it's consistent with the policy of the plan, including these commercial development and special policies applicable to the mainland and housing and neighborhood, or rather, transportation policies. These policies speak to highway-oriented commercial uses being clustered along segments of highways and containing land uses that are mutually compatible and reinforced in use and design, and should be designed in such a way as to minimize signage access points and to prevent unsightly dysfunctional strip development. That was commercial development policy four. Mainland policy four, the county recognizes that the appearance and traffic moving function of the 168-158 corridor is of exceptional importance to both near-term quality of life and long-term economic prospects for residents and property owners in the mainland. And the transportation policy six, that Highway 158-168 shall receive special attention concerning the proper development of land and properties adjoining or accessing this critical arterial. So on its face, this request appears to be consistent with the land use plan and the ordinance. These policies that I just read speak to protecting the appearance of 168-158, highway-oriented industrial uses are not preferred. And this rezoning will require future commercial projects on this property to comply with non-residential standards of the ordinance, to establish higher quality development and enhance the appearance of development along major arterials. One thing to note is property zoned light industrial are not required to meet those non-residential design standards. The standard that they are required to meet so far as facades are that metal facades are prohibited on facades facing major arterials. So the only design standard for a building in LI would be no metal on that facade facing the road. Buildings constructed in GB would have to meet our non-residential design standards, so it would have an improved appearance on the highway. So the applicants have indicated that they plan to build a single-family dwelling on the property to the rear of that stand of trees that you can see in the middle of the property. Staff does have concerns with compatibility of a residential dwelling adjacent to LI zone property and existing LI uses. However, general business zoning is more compatible adjacent to LI than a residential zoning is. And in this case, a rezoning to single-family mainland is not a good option as the property does not border single-family or residential zone property. The UDO allows residential uses in GB zoning, which is a major difference between LI and GB. Although residential uses are permitted in GB, it's not a residential district, and dwellings located in GB districts do not get the same protections for potentially incompatible uses as a dwelling in a residential zoning district. For example, the community compatibility standards of our ordinance that are intended to ensure compatibility between single-family and more intense development do not apply to non-residential uses adjacent to a dwelling in GB. They apply adjacent to a dwelling in a residential zone, but not a dwelling in GB. A dwelling on property adjacent to LI zoning may, the construction of the dwelling on GB adjacent to LI, may trigger additional requirements for certain uses on that LI zone property. For example, the ordinance requires a tattoo parlor to be at least 500 feet from a residential use. So that's a difference between district and use. This actually specifically says a residential use. And another example is that landfills have a setback of 300 feet from a residential use. So on page 14 of your agenda packet, there's a use comparison by zoning district. And you can see, and it basically lays out, these are the uses that are allowed in GB and LI. Then the center column is uses allowed in GB, not LI, and that last column is uses allowed in LI and not GB. So you can see that many commercial uses are permitted in both general business and light industrial, and certain uses are permitted. The uses that are permitted in LI but not GB tend to have more compatibility issues with residential and other on- and off-site impacts. So it's not necessarily an easy recommendation, but staff does, considering that this is a downzoning of property, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request. I previously reviewed land use plan policies that are consistent with the request, including CD4, ML4, and TR6, and staff suggests that it's reasonable and in the public interest because it may result in future non-residential uses that meet higher quality design standards along the highway. Carrottoke Highway, the county's most important major arterial, and the request will reduce the potential for incompatible highway-oriented industrial uses. Any questions for me?
The potential of the general business, would they still be able to have a home and a business on the property in the future?
Yes.
That's what I thought. That's all I have.
How does the noise ordinance play into that? So I see that the center, that an amphitheater stadium, that's a normal noise ordinance would apply throughout the county?
Yeah, there is a noise ordinance in our code of ordinance says that spells out requirements. And I haven't looked at it lately, but there are permits for like special events and other things that you can get for noise. I don't know right offhand whether like an amphitheater has a use permit associated with it that you would also have to meet to get approved in that zoning district. I can look if you want me to.
No, that's okay.
Jenny, could you go just back to the plaque, that one? So the house is gonna go tucked in those grove of trees, right there? That's where the residence is gonna go?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
And then the area at the front of that that's-
Right where her needle was, right there.
That's where it looks like a house, right?
There's a strip right there that you can see through to the highway.
Okay.
That's where we're gonna center the house, right there.
All right, but it's gonna be basically within-
You will not be able to see it.
So the area that's cleared, that's adjacent to Curry Tuck Highway, this area here, now that's gonna still be general business, and what you're saying is that if they decide to go ahead and put a business in front of their retail or something like that, the standards are higher for aesthetics.
Correct.
So it's actually kind of a win-win situation as far as that's concerned, that that's gonna be a better look if a business does open there as opposed to being light industrial.
Correct.
Okay.
That's kind of where I was getting with-
That you can do both, yeah, you can put a house and a business on it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to represent the case tonight? Please come forward and state your name, address. Not necessarily if you signed up to speak on it.
I did.
Okay.
My name is Blake Culpepper, I'm Nigel Culpepper's father, and Nigel and Sarah are both here.
All right.
How's it going?
Yes, sir, how are you doing?
Good.
Does anyone have any questions for this gentleman?
I can ask, do you know what you're getting into, so?
Yeah, yeah, they're fully aware of it. Nigel's been taking care of the property for over 15 years for the prior owner. Nigel and Sarah were married on that property. Unfortunately, this past year, they had to put their pet down, and he's buried there, so it's kind of already a home site for them.
All right. Well, are you presenting for the applicant as well as just speaking in general?
I'm just speaking in their behalf, you know, I'm just helping Jenny's help me just walk through it. Jenny and I work together a lot of times with county issues.
If there was anybody else that was actually gonna represent, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and count you as speaking.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Sounds good. Anything else? All right. Anybody else wanna speak on this? I'm sorry, could you state your name and address for the record?
Blake Culpepper. 22 AB Sam Piper Corrode.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this particular item?
And he's our contractor too, so he's gonna be building our house.
All right, covering all the bases.
Yeah.
I'll speak on behalf of it, Nigel Culpepper.
And I'm Sarah Culpepper.
All right.
So we just really want our dream home.
Is your address the property here? Could you come up if you officially get on the record? And just give her your name and address and-
Sure, I'm Sarah Culpepper, and my address is, well, currently it's 510 West First Street, Hill Devil Hills, North Carolina, 27948.
That's my address as well.
And who are you?
I'm Nigel Culpepper, in IGU.
All right, so you're gonna build your dream home here, and you're well aware of the Weeping Radish next door?
Yeah, obviously it's never bothered us.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've never heard any noises, or, you know, it's great so we could just walk over there and-
Oh, we live on the other side of Hill Devil Hills.
And that they may plan on building some more stuff in the future and-
Oh, yeah.
We're already wearing noise though, it's fine.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for them? All right, I think we're good.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well, unless there's anybody else that wants to speak on this, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions or discussions at this time? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PB 2021 because the request is consistent with the land use plan. Policies are included, policy CD4, policy ML4, policy TR6, and the request is reasonable and in the public's interest because the request will result in future non-residential uses that meet higher quality design standards along Carrottoke Highway, the county's most important major arterial street. The request will reduce the potential for non-compatible highway-oriented industrial use.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, congratulations, y'all are-
Thank you.
That much closer. All right, next item, we have PB 20-22, Pinnacle Storage, Conditional rezoning. Robert Hyde Development LLC is requesting conditional rezoning of a 10.48 acre parcel from Conditional Heavy Industrial, formerly zoned for 84 Lumber, to Conditional Heavy Industrial for self-service storage. The property is owned by Pierce Hardy LTD Partnership and is located at 1462 Carrottoke Highway, tax map 23, parcel 68J, Moyoc Township. And Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
So Robert Hyde Development LLC is requesting conditional rezoning of a 10.4 acre parcel. It's currently zoned Conditional Heavy Industrial, and that zoning was granted in 2015 to a company called 84 Lumber for a large lumber warehouse slash retail operation. That never was constructed, and so the property's been vacant since then. And so Robert Hyde Development is coming through with another conditional rezoning in order to put up a self-storage facility. According to the historical zoning maps, this property's been zoned for industrial use for quite some time, at least since 1970. It's surrounded by several, you can see here in the aerial shot, several industrial uses in the back. See if I can get this mouse to work. Yep, right here, there's a concrete plant, and then back here is a REBA precast concrete where they make giant concrete containers that they put on the railway. There's a recycling facility as well. So it's surrounded by other industrial uses. The adjacent properties here and here, north and south, or what I'll consider north and south, but it's really not. The adjacent properties are zoned industrial as well, except up here in the front by the highway, those, this one and this one, have some general business in the front out by the highway. So that would provide us some sort of a buffer there from the industrial zones in relation to the highway, whereas this property has already been fully zoned heavy industrial in the past, and that would allow that industrial use to come closer to the highway. Here, you get a better picture of this existing zoning. You can see that general business portion in the front on the other two lots. The land use plan has this classified as rural currently. But the Moyoc Small Area Plan does list it as limited service, which is a little more in keeping with the use they're going for. There are several land use policies. Well, we can take a look at the site plan first, I got ahead of myself there. So here's the layout, you can see the highway here. And I'll get to this again later, but there's a somewhat of a phasing plan where they're proposing to build these front buildings first, and the buildings in the rear would be constructed as market demand increased. These are some preliminary building elevations. And as you can see here, they're proposing some brick or stone facades on the front and some architectural features that would face the highway with the storage units in the rear behind that. Well, several policies in the land use plan that this request is consistent with. Three industrial policies, ID1, ID2, and ID5, as well as Community Appearance Policy 3, and Economic Development Policy 1. Also, excuse me, the Moyoc Small Area Plan, Policy BI3, which says to actively market Moyoc as an emerging growth area to encourage targeted retail and service development. There are some proposed conditions that the applicant has agreed to, I'll get to those in just a second. But the, this request is consistent with the land use plan policies and other applicable county adopted plans and the purposes of the ordinance. It's compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land subject to the application, and is the appropriate zoning district and uses for the land and addresses a demonstrated community need. And it's also reasonable and in the public interest because it provides a needed service for the growing residential development in Moyoc. And for those reasons, staff is recommending approval with the following agreed-upon conditions. That there would be 20% glazing or windows on the front of the building facing the highway, finished front facade, either brick, stucco, or similar finish. And to address concerns of proximity to the highway for a use that you would typically see in an industrial zone, they are proposing 140% of the required streetscape landscaping to address that visibility. to address that visibility from the highway.
So they're, they're proposing more than what's required?
Forty percent more, yep. And the fourth condition being that a major site plan application should be submitted for review. Be happy to answer any questions.
Alright. Anybody have any questions? You said glazing or windows, what?
Same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Just a different word.
Alright, that's all I have. Anything? I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anyone here to represent the case tonight?
Chairman?
Mr. Bissell, are you double timing tonight?
I am.
Uh, do you need his name or address? You got it. We're good. You're a familiar face.
I've met this people before, right. Can I, uh, move these slides around? I guess I can, yeah.
You're back on the storage shed now? Oh, yeah. Okay.
So, right, as, uh, and, and I think Jason did a good job of, and thorough job of presenting the proposal. Let me just, uh, kind of reiterate a few things, um, the fact that, uh, it is primarily industrial on both sides, it's industrial in the rear. This property actually, as you, as he stated, was fully zoned, uh, Conditional Heavy Industrial for the 84 lumber use, which didn't materialize, and, and we've kind of used some of the same conditions that the county commissioners approved in connection with that request. Uh, we've set it back 150 feet from, from the road. We have, uh, and 150 feet, uh, 140% landscaping is... There's a landscaping plan in here? No, it's not. We've actually submitted a preliminary landscaping plan that shows how we're going to do that. Um, that was prepared by a, by a landscape architect. Uh, we had actually had, had proposed more than 20% glazing in the front, but, but for this particularly use, the UDO limits it to 20%, so, uh, but it's, as you can see, it's gonna be a nice looking building, uh, it will have the brick facade, and not just the front, that we're wrapping the brick about 30 feet around on the sides. So it'll, it'll have a nice appearance from, from the highway. And of course, we're aware of the, the need to then, what, you know, if the rezoning is successful, then we would submit the, the site plan with, and go through the more detailed engineering and permitting to make sure all the media conditions have been met. Uh, at the community meeting, there were, there were a few residents there, the concerns were primarily drainage and landscaping, and, uh, we discussed what the, the plans were for those issues, and they seemed to be satisfied. And I would be glad to answer any questions.
What were the drainage, uh, issues and satisfaction?
Well, they're, they're, they're downstream, and they want to make sure that the water is, is being retained on the site and slowly released and minimize impacts.
Does he that Dylan Lloyd from the Currituck Soil and Storm Waters stated to clean out any existing perimeter dishes, ditches, and back ditches, ordering the railroad row? Is that gonna be done?
Right, and we'll agree to that subject of being able to get agreements from adjacent property owners. I don't know if we can get an agreement with the railroad in the back.
He also mentions at the large stormwater basin in the back of the angle of the outfall pipe culvert 45 degrees, and, and I don't understand that into a side swell.
Right, and, and we actually made that change to the, to the plan.
You did, okay.
Yeah, and that was just to minimize any erosive velocity where the, uh, where the pipe change, changes angles where it meets, it meets the ditch.
And, and TDOT also made up the suggesting of the gate to offset.
Leave room for a vehicle to pull in.
Right. We believe that we have plenty of room to, to meet that condition.
Yeah, it looks like a nice building.
Any other questions? And you said you got enough room to suffice DOT, pulling in there whatever they...
Right, we'll, we'll show graphically how the, the stacking works at the, at the site plan stage, but I'm confident that we, that we have enough stacking.
Right, that, that, I see that, it's part of the conditions. Okay. But, anybody else have any more? Alright, thank you.
And the, and the developer is here, Sir Robert High.
Yeah, we got him here. Alright, I'll now open the floor for public comment. And, got Mr. High signed up to speak. Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Robert High, 324 Greenville Avenue, Wilmington, North Carolina. The only thing I would point out that, uh, might, y'all might have an interest in is that the exterior roll-up doors that you're seeing right here, uh, actually face internally, so they will not be facing outside.
You won't see those doors from the road.
So, this area here, well, you will not see doors along here or along, along here. There'll be doors facing this way internally only, and I think, I think you might want to...
Alright.
Uh, we've tried to design this building, uh, attractively, um, we built this building basically before, and with other projects we've done with DOT, uh, I see no stacking issues, uh, coming off the highway.
Alright. Uh, hang on a second, does anyone have any questions for Mr. High? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this tonight? Alright, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve PB 2022 with the agreed-upon conditions because the request is consistent with land use plan policies ID1, ID2, ID5, CA3, and ED1, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides a needed service for the growing residential development in Moyoc.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alright. Next item is PB 20-19, Bissell Professional Group. Request to amend the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 248D Minor Subdivision, Chapter 6, Subdivision and Infrastructure Standards, Section 621, Street Standards in Section 623, Utility Standards to Simplify the Approval Process, Design Standards, and Defer Infrastructure Installation for Non-Residential Subdivisions Containing Four or Fewer Lots. And, Ms. Followa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this request before you tonight was submitted by, uh, Mark Bissell of Bissell Professional Group, and it is to establish the, um, process and review standards for non-residential minor subdivision. And what that means is, a non-residential minor subdivision would consist of four or fewer lots, zone general business, and intended for a non-residential use. Uh, this request also includes language, language related to infrastructure installation that we'll talk about a little bit further, um, in more detail. And when we speak about infrastructure, what we're referring to is water, sewer, uh, stormwater, uh, road or access installation, could be decel lanes, um, could even be landscaping or buffers. Sorry about that, I hit the button. There. I always have issues with that. So, last year, to give you a little bit of background, last year, the Board of Commissioners held a retreat, and their retreat is held annually, and that's when they establish their work plan, what they want to see done, um, in the different departments for that particular year. So, uh, they asked staff to address the increased use of minor subdivisions that we were seeing along our roads, Tolles Creek Road, Keratoke Highway, and even some of the other secondary roads, and they asked us to address those access points. So, what that did is, um, we went back to the drawing board and brought forward a text amendment that reduced the number of lots in a minor subdivision. Historically, that a minor subdivision had been a division of property into five or fewer lots, so they asked us to reduce that number down. Um, and they also asked us to look at, uh, how these lots that, that were being created are accessing those roads. They wanted an internal access road to be established so that these lots would come in internally from the development, be able to make their traffic maneuvers, um, before accessing the highway. And that was done in an effort to help, uh, preserve the traffic function of these state roads. That ended up getting adopted in September of 2019, and, um, this proposed text amendment kind of addresses that amendment that was done in September 19 and how it relates to non-residential, uh, land uses and development, um, proposals. So, Mr. Bissell's application that you see on pages, uh, 58 and 59 of your packet indicates that that action or that amendment really prohibited the plating of those additional lots on the existing roads, and it, it had the effect of slowing commercial development, site development. And what he'll do tonight, uh, the applicant that is, is he'll go through how it, um, affected a particular site and how it restricted the, the site development of that property by requiring that they have an internal access. His request tonight will, uh, go through, um, that minor subdivision process, and I'll just summarize and, and hit some of those, those topics that, that, uh, Mr. Bissell will go through and explain to you a little bit in more detail, but this non-residential minor subdivision, as I mentioned, would allow for up to four lots to, um, have some form of access on the state road. And, uh, that would be intended for GB uses and non-residential development, GB zoning districts and non-residential uses. The applicant's request also resets the parent parcel date, and that parent parcel date's important when, uh, staff is reviewing potential subdivisions of property. Typically, that is an April 2nd, 1989 date, and when someone comes forward with a, a request to do a subdivision, what we look at is how many parcel splits have occurred from that parent parcel since 1989, and once you hit the magic number of, um, exceeding the minor subdivision allowance, then it kicks you into the major subdivision requirements. And what this request does is it's asking for that to be reset from that April 2nd, 1989 date to the effective date of the adoption of the ordinance. The amendment also indicates that access points would be established on the plat for the subdivision, and it would be more of a function of a driveway, and as it appears from the proposal, instead of an access road. So, you would, you would no longer have a right-of-way, you would have an easement, and it would be most likely shared. They'd still have to meet the requirements as it relates to the number of access points you can have on a highway, um, but the spacing is different with a driveway versus a road. Uh, minor subdivisions are also not required to meet the stormwater detention requirements, so they would have individual lots stormwater designs, and, um, that's more or less like a site plan design instead of, uh, something that's managed as a subdivision. And it's not uncommon for you to see a minor subdivision to have the individual stormwater design standards anyway, but it, it, it really ta, if, if you had a lot that was part of a major subdivision and you did the parcel reset date through, um, changing it from April 2nd, 1989 to the effective date, it would then allow them to be able to do individual stormwater detention on an individual lot. Uh, we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the staff concerns, uh, for, for that development, and those stormwater detention, um, requirements are really how the amount, what it takes into account is the amount of rainfall that occurs over a specific duration of time and how that is allowed to discharge from the site. The water and sewer would be handled, uh, a little bit differently than what it is now. Uh, it would allow for the recording of the subdivision and the construction to begin. Prior to initiation of the use, they would have to make sure that they have everything in place for water and sewer. Typically, what we see are the water and sewer mains are extended to the property during the subdivision process and completed at that point, making sure that, um, that particular utility is available to the site and when they're ready to begin construction. Uh, it also includes language in the text amendment to establish a general development plan, and that general development plan would provide for what exists today in terms of water, sewer, stormwater within the vicinity of the project. Would give you some indication as to what would need to be done to get, to get those, that infrastructure to, to the site. It may include boring under the road if water doesn't happen to be on that same side of the road, uh, it may be extending it along the road to make sure that all lots are served. And when I say road, I'm, I'm speaking to the existing state road that the property would front, um, anything that's extended beyond that would also be part of that general development plan where it speaks to what would be, how they would get the, uh, utility to the lots that may exist behind those. It also includes the site, site evaluation if that is, if they're not gonna be on sewer, that, uh, the site evaluation has been performed, a conceptual stormwater or drainage plan for the project, as well as preliminary building pads, parking area for each lot, and how fire protection would be managed. and how fire protection would be managed. So, there are some concerns that staff has with this particular application. There are portions of this request that can be supported by staff. But there are also some elements that we believe need to be vetted or have further evaluation to eliminate the conflicts that exist with the UDO and the land use plan. In general, we don't really see any problems with establishing the minor subdivision, the non-residential minor subdivision. We don't see any conflicts with the land use plan or even the UDO to establish that. So, that's a good starting point. We believe that we can work through some of these conflicts and concerns. But that being one of them, there does not appear to be any issues with establishing this process for properties that are zone general business and intended for non-residential purposes. So, that is all good. And we do believe that those two actions would streamline the commercial process and possibly even speed up or accelerate commercial development. And that is one of the items that the applicant did spell out in his application as being a concern. Allowing the parent parcel date to be reestablished, we feel like that would offer up some flexibility with the property in the event that the parent parcel was part of a prior division. If that date was reset, it would give them or offer up some flexibility by allowing a minor subdivision process. However, most of the subdivision standards that are spelled out in the ordinance really reference right-of-way instead of easements or other forms of access. When it speaks to how lots are defined and what we measure from, what the frontage is, all of that deals with right-of-way. And if all of the lots have direct access to an existing right-of-way, that's no problem. You could have some internal easements that could access these properties, still meet the intent of what they're looking for. But as it extends back and goes beyond that first row of development is where we run into some problems with lot, defining a lot, because it would no longer have street access. So, we have to evaluate all the sections of the ordinance a little bit further. If this is an intended use that the board wants to see, we believe that we can reach a consensus with that. Typically, you would probably see these most likely on the main road anyway and have direct frontage on a major arterial. If there is a possibility where we could limit the impacts of this amendment by saying that you have to have frontage on a road, existing state road, and you know, it can't extend back, we believe that we could support something along those lines. So, prior to 2019, the minor subdivision process allowed up to five lots to be created through, not always a road, it could even be a shared access. And if you were located on Carrottoke Highway or Tolls Creek Road, it had that requirement in there that you could have so many accesses on that road. And if you had 1,000 feet of frontage, you could have three access points. And you wanted to do four or five lots, you'd have to share those. And that's where you see in some instances where the access road comes in and it wise off to provide access to the houses. That was, when the Board of Commissioners were seeing those types of development patterns, they felt like that was not the direction that we needed to go in. And that's where the internal street access road came from. So, allowing for the non-residential minor subdivision to use a shared access, we have to be really careful in how that is managed, how it's designed, to make sure that it is extended as far back as it needs to go and that the property owners or the developer, whoever that is, is responsible for maintenance of that, which isn't spelled out in this amendment. Because we see oftentimes whenever accesses are shared between property owners, there's always a conflict, or there usually is a conflict, of who pays for what, I'm not doing this, or I'm not doing that. Your trucks damaged my road, I'm not repairing it. And we just need to be careful and cautious that when we do this amendment and it is more like a driveway and it is on someone's property, that all of those easements are in place to protect anyone that may be accessing from that or extending utilities from that. So, that's a concern. The individual site design, so it will have the appearance, up to four lots, of that strip look to it. And I believe the board was looking for something less than a strip look by requiring these internal access roads. That's not to say that it can't be achieved similarly through an easement. We just, again, need to make sure that we have the language in place that those access points and those access roads are such that it creates that cohesive development and not development that's on individual lots. Like, it looks more like it goes together instead of something like, here's a lot, here's a lot, here's a lot, here's a lot, and everybody acts independently. That's one thing we need to be cautious when we look at this amendment. The timing of the infrastructure installation. So, in this request, there is a language that speaks to the water and wastewater to be handled at the time of installation. We do have a concern with at least that aspect of it because if you were to buy a piece of property, typically, all the utilities already ran to that property. All you have to do is tap into it. Mr. Bissel will probably speak tonight about, non-residential is a lot different than residential development. If you are a non-residential or a commercial developer, you somewhat anticipate these types of improvements being part of your development and your design. But we, and that may work with one, two, maybe even three lots. But at some point, when you have to extend that line or extend that service, that main, whatever it is, it may increase the cost and have the, at least the, on the surface, it would look like it might actually slow down development. Because, you know, if you're interested in that lot, that's most desirable lot, but you have to design the whole line to get it down to you as a buyer. That's an increased cost to you that you may not be able to absorb. As a seller, you tend to put that into your lot cost. You know, when you're developing a piece of property, you put that in your lot cost and that transfers on to the buyer. You're giving them a lot that, or selling them a lot that is ready for development. And this, and although it is minor, it has, it potentially could have an impact that's not desired and could slow development. Now, if you have a buyer for a lot and they want to buy that property and they know what they need to do, that's fine. That's fine, you know, they know, they understand what they need to do. They're at the corner of an intersection and they have direct access to utilities. They have direct access to a road. You know, all they need to do is run a service line. Those types of things probably will not have unintended consequences because a corner lot is going to develop as a corner lot, regardless if it's a minor subdivision or a major subdivision. It's going to have a very similar development pattern. So, one, two lots, probably not a significant impact. As you get further down the road, you are, at least what appears to us, is sprawling that out and it's less of a cohesive development. I spoke a little bit about the maintenance of the infrastructure, making sure that access roads, any of the common elements that might be used by others are maintained. And that kind of comes to, not necessarily putting it in your ordinance, but putting it in your documents as you transfer that on to a property owner, making sure that's being taken care of. Easement versus right-of-way. So, when you remove the right-of-way component of this and look at it from just an easement standpoint, easements are located on an individual property. They grant the right of someone else to cross their property for whatever purpose. It may be for access, it may be for pedestrian purposes, it may be for utilities. But someone still owns that property. And that easement gives them, someone else, the right to cross it. Right-of-way is a dedicated area that really isn't owned by any one lot owner. And it has the ability of being accepted by the state if it meets their criteria. Otherwise, it's something that would just be maintained by the lot owners. But what it does do is, our ordinance is, like I mentioned, the ordinance is written really to handle more the right-of-way end of it instead of the easement end of it. And rights-of-way require pedestrian circulation. They require street trees. They require deceleration lanes for non-residential development. And there are also setbacks from it. Easements would not have the deceleration lanes. It would look more along the lines of, how many cars will this lot or this use produce instead of, this is a non-residential subdivision and you need to have D cell lanes. From street trees perspective, you would have that line of the right-of-way where you'd have the street trees along the edge of the right-of-way. With individual lot development, what you'd have would be shrubs. Not, any way you look at it, you want to soften that vehicular area. So, that would be achieved, you would just reduce the number of street trees by doing that. Pedestrian circulation is probably something we really need to look at with the language and how that's being addressed through the lots that are being created. So, as I mentioned, we are concerned about the possibility of stripping out four lots along the highway. We don't feel like that's supported by the land use plan or by the ordinance. And it's definitely not supported by that 2019 minor subdivision amendment. But what I do want to point out is that that doesn't mean that we can't work through these issues with the applicant with a little more time and going through the ordinance to make sure we're not creating any unintended consequences and any conflicts with the language. So, before I go through staff's recommendation, I'd like to offer up Mr. Bissel's presentation, and then we can conclude with staff's recommendation.
All right. Thank you. We're just going to go on unless anybody had any questions or come back to that.
I'll come back up.
Sure. All right, Mr. Bissel, your turn.
Well, I just kind of first want to show you how we got to this point and why we think this text amendment is necessary. And my client, who is trying to develop this particular five-and-a-quarter acre tract of land, which is on 168 in the heart of Moayok, is actually here and he can elaborate when we get to that point on some points as well. But initially, what we were trying to do was to carve out a two-acre lot on the corner. This fronts on, has frontage on Carrottoke Highway and Baxter Lane. And prior to the amendment that Donna mentions that was adopted last year, we would have been able to come in and do a minor subdivision, potentially, kind of like this. Yeah, we looked at doing it and we ran into some problems and realized that we were going to actually have to dedicate a public right-of-way into the property because of the prohibition against additional lots being created that front on state roads. And I don't know that the county commissioners really intended for that to apply to a commercial lot in this kind of a situation. Looking at it a little bit more, the need on that corner appeared like it might grow to three acres. But we wouldn't even be able to do a two-lot subdivision because it's creating an additional lot that fronts on a state road, which is prohibited by that ordinance. So, we're kind of stuck either developing five-and-a-quarter acres at once. And there are larger commercial tracts like this. So, I'm aware of at least one that's in a 10-acre category that wouldn't be able to create a lot on 168. So, we looked at, well, what would the ordinance require us to do as it currently stands? So, we did this sketch. And what we would have to do would be to build, to create a 50-foot right-of-way, build a roadway into the property, connect it over to Baxter Lane, and then connect the interior lots. This would create a three-lot subdivision, which gives us the desired initial two-acre lot on the corner and potentially two one-acre parcels left over on the south end. But in the process, you've reduced, well, it has a number of problems. First of all, it requires a major subdivision approval process, which is time-consuming. Secondly, it reduces the depth of that corner property by 50 feet, which makes it very, which actually makes it unusable for the end user that's already proposed to go on that lot. And it requires the developer, rather than being able to just do a site plan to develop that lot and doing the infrastructure that that lot needs for that particular commercial user, to spend, and I would guess, in excess of $100,000 to do infrastructure prior to even being able to subdivide the lot out. So, it's a very difficult situation to work with. So, what we're proposing to do, and this is the four-lot version, is to create an amendment that will allow for non-residential use in land that's already zoned for commercial uses that fronts on state highways to be able to divide it without building that infrastructure up front so that commercial development could proceed with a site plan after a minor subdivision. And what you see in this example is that we're showing two access points which would be allowed as driveways, be shared driveways on Carrottoke Highway and a driveway on Baxter Lane, which the end user needs in order to make the development work. We would then provide a cross-access easement across the back so that if other properties that are developed later would need that access to Baxter, they would have it available as well. Regarding utilities, this property has an existing sewer force man that's shown in red along 168. It has an existing water line on the other side of Carrottoke Highway that also comes across and goes up Baxter. across and goes up Baxter. And you can see right here, there's an existing fire hydrant that serves this property. So my client would potentially be able to subdivide this first two or three acres out of the corner. And I've lost my, uh, lost my arrow somehow. There it is.
Yeah, that arrow is tricky.
It's a sensitive arrow. Would be able to develop that property without building significant infrastructure. Could provide, this existing fire hydrant may well provide sufficient fire flow for that existing development. The existing water line can be tapped with a water service that would serve this development. The existing force main could be tapped with a small pump station that would serve this development. He could develop his own stormwater pond, rather than trying to figure out what might go on these other, other properties. It's, it's not like a residential development. We know what the residential use is going to be. We know the approximately the size of the house. We know how many bedrooms roughly it's going to be, what the lot coverage is going to be. We can design a stormwater pond up front for, like we do for a residential subdivision that is designed to handle the runoff from all of the lots and we know where to put it. Likewise, we know what the fire flow requirement is going to be for fire protection for those lots. We know how much wastewater is going to be generated for each house, so we know how to size a pump station. And so all those things are figured out upfront. But with commercial development like this, we don't know a lot of those things right now. We know what commercial user number one needs. We can figure out what his fire flow is. We know what his wastewater usage is going to be. And, and we can design a stormwater pond that works with that particular development. And we can provide access in easements so that these utilities can be extended later on. For example, you know, we have a residual two and a quarter acre lot at the south end. We don't know what that use might be. That could be a, say a retail business that would typically use something on the order of a residential wastewater flow or generate that kind of a wastewater flow. And it may, and it may not have more than a residential fire demand, in which case we may, he may be, that developer of that property may be able to extend a water main along the back through that easement and put a hydrant there and that would serve his needs. Or that could be a 100-seat restaurant that would generate the equivalent of wastewater of 20 homes, in which case he's going to need a much larger pump station that would be in the front of the, of the lot there. Could also tie into that existing force main. He may have a needed fire flow demand that's 1,000 gallons a minute rather than, than a 500 gallon of residential type flow, in which case he may need to run a pipe. I wish this arrow would come back.
Gosh, there we go.
He may need to run a pipe from the 12-inch main across the road under here in order to get sufficient fire flow to serve that lot. He may not need this.
Which side of the road is the sewer main on?
This is the sewer main here in the back.
So it's on that side of the road?
It's on that side. He just needs to build a pump station here and tap into that main. And he doesn't need an easement for that. But the, the water main is on the other side of the road unless we use the one here. And that, and that's a smaller main, which will, you know, generate a lo, a lower fire demand. It'll produce a, a, it won't produce 1,000 or 1,500 gallon fire demand that some kinds of resi, of commercial development require. But, you know, a commercial developer is not like a person who's buying a house. A person who's buying a house expects that they're going to have water and sewer lines in place in front of their house. They expect that their stormwater is going to be taken care of by the developer. A commercial developer is different. They have a, a different perspective on it. Their particular end use is different than another commercial developer's end use. And they're accustomed to figuring these things out at the site plan stage for their particular development. So in a nutshell, that's kind of why we're proposing this amendment. So that these things, these details can be worked out at the, at the site plan stage. And we've proposed a four-lot maximum because, and actually the, you know, in this particular example, three lots would probably be sufficient. We said four lots because of our knowledge of larger tracts. So this 10-acre tract that we're aware of could do four lots of two and a half acres each without having to put in major infrastructure. And we think that might be appropriate. We think that this is really kind of an unintended consequence for, of, for when that text amendment that was adopted last year. I think the, I mean, I understood that the county commissioners wanted to eliminate stripping out residential development on state roads, but I don't think they intended to create this situation for somebody who wants to do a commercial development. So we think this is really simpler than it might seem from the staff report. Access points can be provided and platted. Easements, you know, cross-access and cross-utility easements can be platted along with the first lot and provide these services, make these services available for the future lots. And something like this can go to record and somebody can go ahead and work on their site plan. I'm hoping this makes sense.
So each lot would not deal with their stormwater until they got the site plan?
Right.
Which could be anything?
And prior to that amendment, they could have.
Okay. So prior to the amendment, you would have been able to do this?
As a minor subdivision.
I, I.
If.
Go ahead.
Yeah, all property wouldn't have built it. And this particular one may not have because of major subdivisions being already done out of the parent tract. But with the amendment, it resets that clock so that you can do a minor subdivision.
Okay. Well, I, okay.
But a typical commercial tract on 168 on Carrottoke Highway, it hasn't had other lots carved out of it in the past, would be able to just put a lot to record and fill up a commercial site plan. And they could have prior to the amendment.
All right.
Well, I, I, I guess the staff has also the problem with the egress. I, I think each individual lot. So would the access to the property be completely off of Baxter Lane?
No, see, we've provided two.
I'm sorry.
We've provided two ingress and egress points here on 168. But those wouldn't be state roads.
Right.
And they don't need to be state roads. So the developer of, you know, so commercial user number one here is going to put in access points number one here and number two here. And this will be a driveway that will serve as parking lot and as internal traffic circulation and then connect back over to here. And then an easement is provided so that commercial user number two can use this connection point that's already in place to connect to Carrottoke and has the option, if he wants to, of connecting to this cross-access easement to Baxter.
So it'd really allow you to connect parking lots together?
Exactly. It's done all the time.
I mean, does it sound like between the concerns that are being brought up, like, do you think that there's, there's, and the ability to work through some of the issues and concerns that, that have?
Yeah, I think they're pretty simple, really. I don't know that we can develop a solution for every possible concern that everybody, anybody could think of in every situation, but I think that by and large, it's pretty
Would you have any problem with us tabling it for you to do that?
No.
Okay.
Because it sounds like you're close. And it's a need. It is a need.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? We're gonna, Ms. Vallow is going to come back up, so we may come back, we may not. But thank you anyway.
Thank you. I wanted to allow you to be able to see.
Sure.
Excuse me. To be able to see what was being presented to go along with this text amendment. Although it works with this scenario, excuse me, one concern we have is if you had a deeper property and you wanted to go back further, in talking with our utilities department, how that main is extended can be problematic. Who gets the permits to do that? So we would ask that we actually table this request, as you mentioned. We don't want to recommend denial. We'd like to be able to support this request because we do believe that it will help aid and accelerate commercial development. Excuse me. So again, tabling would be our preference. It would allow us time to work with the applicant, utilities, to address these concerns. Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, I think we're at the public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and if there's anybody who wants to speak on this. Sure. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Certainly. Sanford Cohen. My address is 4445 Corporation Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Good evening. Thank you very much for, for having me tonight. I am the developer behind the applicant tonight and I appreciate everyone's attention. I know it's getting late and this is a very complicated situation, so I, I do want to thank you all for your attention. I just want to make a couple of small comments. One, I, we, we've been on the phone with the planning staff and they've been extremely helpful and, and given us feedback and we appreciate that. I think that we all have a common goal that we want to get to and I have every, very optimistic and I have every reason to think we'll get there. So I appreciate the additional time. I know commercial's a little bit different than residential, so there's a tad learning curve, we'll get there. So thank you very much for listening to us and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. I don't see anybody else, so we'll close the public hearing. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to move to table PB 2019 so the applicant can address the staff's comments, UDO inconsistencies, and land use plans policies.
All right. We have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Who wants to be?
I'll need it.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. That's all we have for items tonight, so any announcements? Anybody has any announcements? I don't think we're back before Christmas, so everybody have a good Christmas.
You too.
Day health.
Holidays.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll be back in January. Anybody else? All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.